Okay, it's seven o'clock. I'd like to welcome everybody to the July 9th meeting of 2020 of the Carver School Committee. If you'd like, be pleased all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right, thank you, everyone. All right. So, we're gonna go... Okay, so I'd like to take some things out of order if the rest of the committee doesn't mind. I'd like to commence with comments from the general public, comments from the EAPC, and approval of minutes before we go on to the reorganization of subcommittees. Any opposition to that? Okay, Scott, why don't we do that then? Do we have any hands up for comments from the public?
We did not. Seeing, using the town meeting phrase, seeing no movement to the mic.
Okay, I don't have the screen up, I don't have that screen in front of me. All right, comments from the EAPC, please.
I think Tammy and Tom are here.
Yeah, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I hope you've had a great fourth and got to spend some time with your families. This is our first school committee meeting we've had since the DESI guidelines have come out. And in my opinion, I believe the guidelines have actually opened up more questions than answers. I know the committees in Carver have been meeting, have been meeting recently and are continuing to meet throughout this summer. And I believe there's gonna be a lot of conversations regarding the opening of school, not only in Carver, but in my opinion around the state. I'm gonna turn it over to Tammy now. Thank you, have a good evening, everyone.
Yep, sorry, Scott. Thanks, Tom, I appreciate that and I hope everyone is well also. I know we've been, the last couple of school committees, talking about the resolution to fund our schools through both the federal, state, and local. And I just wanted to just reiterate how important it is. Last fall, the state legislator had passed the Student Opportunity Act, which had put money that has been greatly needed throughout all of the districts in our schools and funding our schools. And now that we're in this, the situation we're in right now, these funds are just as important, if not more, than ever. These funds are needed to, you know, provide our, the resources and supports that all of us are gonna need due to the difficulties that we've been having. I wanna make a comment that we have started, as you know, because it's on the agenda, that we've started working on our committees to look at reopening in the fall. And I wanna say that I have been, from what I've heard and from what I've experienced, I'm very, sorry about that, very, I'm very, I guess, happy in moving forward. The positive, I just wanna stay on the positive note. Like, we had looked at our guiding principles and one of the, some of the main themes are keeping our students and staff healthy and safe. As teachers, we have just continuously try, are asked to, we work really hard. Like, for example, the remote learning, we all jumped in without really knowing exactly what direction to go. So, and to just make that point, there are many teachers that are working on this committee using their own time to try to do what's best for our schools and our students and our community. So, there's so many things that we need to think about. How the students are gonna get there through transportation, class sizes, like, what are we, what is the best and safest way to have our students be in the classroom? Appropriate PPE, having the best, safest equipment for the teachers and the students that need it and making accommodations where needed. Safe ventilations in all of our classrooms. Lunch protocols, like, how do we do that safely for, again, our students and our staff? Providing the social, emotional curriculum and needs for both our staff and our students. Cleaning protocols, how is that going to be? Who's gonna be responsible for those and how is that going to take place? Policies on testing and contract tracing, how's that gonna work? Restroom use, how to protect those with the high risk, whether it's students or staff? All of these things that we need to think about with the health and safety of our staff and students and just as important, because our staff and students also live in all of our communities. So, this is all the things, I just wanna take the time to reiterate on how important this has been and, and we are ready, I can't say eager, but we are ready to definitely and very passionate about doing the work that we need to do for the safety of our, our community. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Tammy. Thank you, Tom. Some good points you brought up there. Okay, so, moving on to communications, Scott.
Do we wanna go back up and...
Oh, yes, sorry.
...the new minutes and the reorganization?
Yeah, okay, that's right, we'll only do that. I was gonna, okay, that's fine. All right, so we're gonna have, this is something we put off from last meeting because we didn't have all of our members here. Hopefully, he was right to lay everything on to James.
Jason has his head up, Andy.
Ah, James, Jason, go ahead.
Aren't we approving minutes first, no?
Yeah, I think at the beginning it was to go through approval of minutes and then go back up.
You're right, my fault, I'm sorry.
Move to approve June 11th, 2020, open session minutes.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion, correction of the text of the minutes, or?
I do. I have one correction. On the dates for the school committee meetings for next year, it's listed as May 14th. It should be May 13th.
Okay. Be 13th instead of May 14th. Is that all?
That's it. Some minor change. Unless you guys wanna meet Friday, May 14th, I mean, then...
No, no, I agree with, that's right. All right, does anybody else have anything? All right, so we have a motion and a second, roll call, vote. I'll start with James.
Stay in.
Stay, oh, that's right, you weren't there. Jason?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. All right, all right, so that, four and one extension. All right, so now, we'll go back to the reorganization for subcommittees. So, as I was saying, the reason why we didn't do this last time, we put it off for this meeting, so we'd have a full complement on the committee for those who want to, might wanna join some, one of these subcommittees. The first we have is the Policy Subcommittee. Last several years, it's been James and I. I would, I would voluntarily be back on this if, but if anybody else has other, other interest in it, that's fine too. But, does anybody have any other interest in being in the Policy Subcommittee?
I would.
What is covered by the Policy Subcommittee?
Hold on, wait a minute, Stephanie first.
Oh, sorry, I just said yes.
Okay, James?
If Stephanie's gonna do, wants to do it, that's fine.
Oh, yeah, you guys all kinda three spoke at the same time. Jen, what did you say, what were you saying?
I was questioning what types of things cross the Policy Committee.
Well, it just depends really what things that come up. It's things that come up in the, in the, with the district and the community and things that get brought to our attention. A lot of things are reviewed. We review many different things on there. James and I have reviewed, you know, several things and made adjustments to things. Some things have come down from the state, just wording changes that were updates to our previous policies. It's really just straightforward things. And anything that the Policy Subcommittee puts together gets then, if the Policy Subcommittee agrees to something, a change or a new policy or something, then it gets brought to the whole committee for at least one or two readings.
Okay. I'm fine if Stephanie wants to do it, I was just curious.
Okay, Scott, were you gonna say something?
I'm, oh, go ahead.
Oh, good, Jen, so I was gonna suggest, but I don't know if, I think we're okay if we, unless there's a concern, that maybe we just take this as one motion at the end, the whole group? Policy, each committee?
I would say...
Committee's choice, you can do it one by one or we can, I think we're okay if we take them all at the end.
Right, I was just getting nominations now for people who might be interested.
Okay.
I think Andy and Stephanie, that's, I'm good with that. James, I mean, are you heartbroken or not?
Available.
Okay, so it's, if you want, I can step away if you really wanna do it, James.
Andy doesn't, not, I think it's important that you're, that you're there, so.
Okay, all right, so, I'll put nominations, Andy and Stephanie for that one.
Anything that goes to, Jen, anything that goes to the Policy Committee has to go to our committee anyway, nothing ever happens without it. It's just sort of preemptive work to help it be more prepared when it comes to the committee.
Right.
Thanks for clarifying.
Okay, next is the Superintendent's Evaluation, which is the Chair and the Vice Chair, so it'll be myself and Stephanie. Now, we go to negoti, no, Capital Outlay Committee? Any interest in anybody for the Capital Outlay Committee?
And the only thing I'll say about Capital Outlay is, over the last few years, Capital Outlay has been meeting during the day. I don't, I think there might be some changes in the structure. Several of the members are retiring. People have been part of the committee for many, many years. So, I'm really not sure if that Capital Outlay Committee, which is a town committee, is gonna continue during the day or me in the evening.
Well, I think, I think...
During the day makes it problematic for most of our members. And so, over the last few years, I think maybe he's been the official representative, but really Brad and I have really represented in his stead.
Right.
As the committee during this...
I would love, I would love to, oh, sorry, Scott. I would love to have been at these meetings, but because they meet like in the morning or early afternoon, I just can't make it.
A lot of times we would meet at either eight or nine in the morning.
We haven't had a consistent representative there for five, six...
Yeah.
At least years.
But I think that actually might be shifting. I think, so I think there's a possibility that maybe Capital Outlay may start to meet in the evening again, which would be...
Scott, was it, was it, was it corrected that I heard that the Chairman of the School Committee has a seat at the Capital Outlay meetings, or is this, is this the seat?
They're representatives of the School Committee.
Is that traditionally the Chairman?
I think, no, I don't know if we've always had the Chair.
Generally, generally, generally it was.
Generally, it's for the Chair, I believe it has to be the Chair.
All right, well, I mean, I would, I had interest in this if they changed the time, but I mean, if someone else thinks that they can be more available and represent the committee. Like I said, most of the time Scott and Brad have been going to these, or at least Scott as well. You know, does anybody have any interest in this?
I'm available during the day now for the foreseeable future. So, if they are during the day, then I can certainly attend, they'd be happy to. Whatever's best for everyone.
Okay, anybody else?
I might, might I make a suggestion that the fact that it's only one person is, I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's something from the committee, committee requirement, as opposed to it being either the Chair or the Vice Chair, depending on who could attend. And I believe we may have even had that discussion before.
Yeah, I believe that it is, there's, in, you know, in theory, there's one representative from the School Committee. I think that could be, it's possible that could be a rotating person as a, as a voting member of, you know, obviously, I've been going and voting in representation of the School Committee. So, you know, the town's allowed that to happen. I'm sure they're okay with it being a rotating person, you know, and if that's what you're suggesting, James.
I just think if they're, you know, I, my thought would be Chair and Vice Chair, because you'd want the, that's usually the representation we've had. And I know it seems to put a lot on them that way, but in the same sense, it also makes sense. Because as long as representation is there, then if either one of you can make it, then I think having a voice there is, is more important than necessarily who that voice is in a way.
Yeah, no, I agree. Like I said, I've, I've always had an interest in this committee, but I haven't been able to make it. So, so James, are you asking if we can add a position, add a second person to this?
I'd make a motion.
I mean, I have no problem with that, because if we wanted to make a Chair and Vice Chair, if I'm the Chair and Stephanie's the Vice Chair, one of us can make it, if not both of us, that fulfills that anyway.
I would say that we, only thing that we do that with the condition of checking with the Capital Outlay Committee to make sure that that's within their privy. And, yeah.
Or if both of them show up and one of them's a voting member.
Well, I think that will be up to them to really decide and talk to each other who is, I'll make this one or I can't make that one, can you, kinda thing.
I believe the structure of the committee itself is the School Committee gets one voting member. So, we can't, we can't change the structure of the Capital Outlay Committee and say we're gonna have two voting members.
Right.
But I think we can say we have two representatives and it's one of you, one or two of you are gonna go and, and vote and represent the School Committee.
Yeah, I think that's fine, I like that.
No, why don't we just nominate, well, yeah, that's what, I'm for having Stephanie go as the Vice Chair and she can report back to us as, as you have, Scott. And, and Scott, in your position, would you still be able to attend these meetings?
Yeah, I will say, I've always attended the, well, I attend almost all Capital Outlay meetings. I can say I've been to every single one since I've been superintendent. And there, there are times I attended with a member of the School Committee.
Okay.
When the School Committee Chair or the School Committee Representative was able to go.
All right, so that's not gonna block you at all from participating. Stephanie would be voting.
Correct.
Okay, so, anybody else have any other nominations for that? Okay. Hearing none. All right, Stephanie's in for that. Now, we go to negotiations, it's usually the Chair and Vice Chair for teachers.
And next year will be a negotiation year, so we'll be getting, we'll be beginning negotiations with all units next year.
Okay. Second is Educational Support Professionals.
We tend, historically, we tend to split these up a little bit. That was Andrew Cottarelli and Andrew Sullivan the last time.
Right. I'll do it.
I'll be involved in, in any of them, Scott, that you think will be within that, like, if, I don't know how to put that. I mean, if it was a switch out, if the year, like, you're talking about starting till after January, right?
Yeah, we'll probably have to start till after January.
All right.
So, Jason and James?
That's fine with me.
Okay. Okay, next we have Custodians.
Because James and Jason last time, but we didn't have any negotiations per se.
Okay, and now, just for our new member, Jen, if you, if there's any of these that interest you, just speak right up.
I'm interested in bus drivers, 'cause I have a Class B CDL and I drove buses previously.
We've been looking for another driver that's in...
I'll make that, I'll make that nomination for her then.
There you go. Okay, bus drivers.
I'll second.
I'll stay on with Custodians.
Okay. Jason?
Then we need one other person for Custodians.
And we have...
I can be Custodians too, it doesn't matter.
Well, yes, two, so Stephanie and Jason?
Oh, it's Jen and Jason.
Jen said she would take it.
Okay, oh, sorry, I gotta miss it.
I don't wanna steal, I don't wanna steal Jen's thunder.
Okay, now we have food service.
I'll be, I'll do that.
Okay, you're gonna do food service, James?
Sure.
And one other.
That's...
One, and one other, yep.
That's one other, okay, who else wants to do, anybody?
For what, food service?
Food service.
No, I can do that if you want, unless someone else wants to.
Well, I can do it too, is, how many, how many do you have stuff? You have...
She has four already.
Four teachers so far.
Yeah, you have four already, stuff.
Okay.
I'll take that one.
Okay. Then we're even.
So, for the, not, for the, to make it official, do we have to make a motion and just rattle off all of them for...
You know, what I was gonna do is, I was gonna, I was gonna have Gina review the list.
Who else is doing bus drivers with me?
There's only one for bus drivers.
There's only one.
Oh, I'm doing that solo, okay.
Bus drivers are solo.
They're easy.
And then the last one's the Appointing Authority.
Oh, yes. Appointing Authority for Old Colony Regional...
I'll stay on that, that's, that's not, that's fine.
Okay.
Three members.
I'm gonna stay on that.
Yeah, we'll just keep our same one from last year.
So, Jason and Steph?
And you.
And you.
Wait, there you go.
And you, Andy, it's the Chair and two members.
Oh, that's right.
All right, and then Gina, we're gonna put the pressure on you. Did you get all of these? Can you read them back to the committee? And then we can have a motion to approve based on Gina's statement and then do a roll call.
I can.
Of course you can.
Okay, I don't know, there was a lot of discussion, let's see.
There was, I'm sorry.
Okay, for subcommittees, your Policy Subcommittee, Andrew Cottarelli and Stephanie Clardy. Superintendent's Evaluation, Andrew Cottarelli, Stephanie Clardy. Capital Outlay, Stephanie Clardy. Negotiations for Teachers, Andrew Cottarelli, Stephanie Clardy. Educational Support Professionals, Jason Greenwood, James O'Brien. Custodians, Jason Greenwood, Jennifer Pratt. Food Service, James O'Brien, Andrew Cottarelli. Bus Drivers, Jennifer Pratt. The Appointing Authority for Old Colony School Committee, Jason Greenwood, Stephanie Clardy, Andrew Cottarelli.
Nice.
Good job.
Move to, move to accept the slate.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Seeing none. All right, all those in favor, this is a roll call, vote. Stephanie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
An aye, and I am an aye. So, it's unanimous. All right. Now, we're moving on to communications, Scott.
Just wanted to share a small communication with the committee. At the very beginning of the school closure, our nurses, some of our science teachers actually got together and made a donation to Cape Cod Hospital of PPE of some masks and goggles and gloves that we had in the district. Obviously, we're looking for all those things now, we're purchasing some of those stuff, but that's, that's great. So, Cape Cod Hospital recognized the school community for making that donation and I just wanted to share that recognition with the committee. And they're obviously thanking the members of our staff who organized that donation of materials. Goggles, gloves, face and masks.
Very nice. Reports from the Superintendent.
Personnel, we have had some personnel movements since our last meeting in June. We've had a couple of new hires, Craig Laciato as a math teacher at the middle high school and Craig Lozon as a long-term substitute at the elementary school for a maternity leave that's gonna begin in September. We've had a couple of resignations. Lydia Storey, who was an ESP at the elementary school. Riga Whipple, who was a Spanish teacher at the middle high school. And Barbara Barden, who was a food service employee. And then we, we actually have had some movement of staff based on positions opening up. So, we've had a few transfers. So, Zach LeBlanc has gone from a special education teacher at the elementary school to being a special education teacher at the middle high school. Lindsay Swine has gone from a pre-K teacher to a special education teacher in grade four. And a lot of, a lot of the movement here is people are just sliding into other people's positions as they've moved based on their, you know, level of professional interest. Amy Tenberg is ESP from the, from the elementary school to the middle high school. Craig Lozon, who was actually mentioned, who we've also hired as a long-term sub, is also transferring, he was an ESP at the middle high school to the elementary school. And then at the end of September, he's gonna take on that long-term subposition. Jennifer Cabral, ESP at the middle high school to the elementary school. Nikki Picarella, as, was a special education teacher for one of our programs, the GAP program, the Graduation Assistance Program. And she's actually gonna become Inclusion Special Ed for grades 11 and 12. And she's actually switching roles with Dylan Antel, who was the inclusion teacher in grades 11 and 12 and is now gonna become the GAP teacher, the Graduation Assistance Program teacher at the middle high school. So, that's our staff movement since our last meeting.
All right, very good, thank you very much. We'll go to B now, Review of Initial Fall Guidance.
Okay.
This is a very interesting topic for everyone.
This is, this will, this is probably gonna be the, the majority of our meeting this evening. It's gonna be reviewing this guidance and talking about it. Just wait a second for the presentation to come up. All right. And the presentation I'm sharing with the committee tonight, I do want the committee to know that I actually shared this presentation with the faculty of both the middle high school and the elementary school. I had a voluntary faculty meeting after the guidance was released. I had good, great attendance at both meetings, considering it was a voluntary meeting during the summer. I also did a parent meeting last week after the guidance was released and had a really nice turnout for a summer night, a summer evening. I think over 130 parents attended, which was great. So, very similar presentation, you know, obviously, it's been about a week since this initial guidance was released. Things are always changing and developing. We're always adjusting to new information, you know, including since, since I even developed this presentation and gave it to the teachers and the parents, I've actually, we've actually had two meetings with the Commissioner, which hasn't changed things a lot, but it has made some, some small shifts in terms of focus, which I'll kinda hit as we go through the presentation. So, who, who developed the guidance? And I just wanted to make it clear that Department of Education established a return to school working group that included educators, parents, students, infectious disease specialists, pediatricians, and other medical professionals. Specifically, the American Academy of Pediatrics, the Massachusetts chapter has, was part of the planning group and they've actually written a formal letter of support for the guidance, saying they're, they're supporting the information as presented. In the, you know, in the other meetings, I just showed the letter, the letter's in your background, you can see, you can link it to it, I'm not gonna necessarily pull it up. And actually, since I made this presentation, the National Chapter of the American Academy of Pediatrics have come out formally supporting an in-person return to school for all students in the United States. So, that's the official position that that group has taken. In the guidance, DESI actually outlines four goals. They said, what's the purpose of this guidance? So, I think it was important to kinda share those goals. So, what they identified as goals was a safe return, as many students as possible to in-person school settings, to maximize learning and address our students' holistic needs, provide a clear set of health and safety requirements for in-person learning, grounded in the most up-to-date scientific literature and discussions with expert medical advisors, require districts and schools to prepare a reopening plan that addresses three possible models, which we'll get to in a second. And then it kinda outlines the future guidance that's gonna come to support the transition into whatever we end up doing in the fall. So, what are the three models they're asking us to do? And what they're, some, some of the clarification that's come out since this meeting is, we are gonna have to present one formal plan to the Department of Education. Today, we were actually given a deadline for a template that they're putting together of July 31st. So, they're saying that the plan has to be at least a template that they're gonna send us next week. So, it's just, we don't even have the template yet, but they're gonna send us one next week. Has to be done by July 31st and turned in to the department. In that plan, we have to talk about three possible models. One is a full in-person return, meaning safety and health requirements. One is gonna be a hybrid model, which will be a combination of in-person and remote learning. The third model is a remote learning model, which I'm actually gonna, and as I get into the presentation, say there's actually two parts to the remote learning, there's kind of an A and B to the remote learning piece, which we'll get into. So, there are a couple of slides in this presentation, where you'll see kind of a yellow line down the side. Just wanna give credit to the Commissioner of Education, Jeff Riley. These were taken from his presentation that he gave to superintendents. He shared that with us and said, we were free, you know, he welcomed us to use any of his slides as we develop presentations for our communities and for our committees. But I do wanna credit that this slide is from the Commissioner. So, any, any slide you see that kinda has this yellow ribbon along the right side is from the Commissioner's presentation. And ultimately, they're saying the real goal, long-term, is a return without restrictions, kind of this far left concept or idea. But they're saying that that's not a realistic option right now for any school district in Massachusetts. That's our goal eventually, that hopefully we're gonna get to that point, but that's not where we are. And then ultimately, we're, we're in that same concept of continuum of fall reopenings, those three models that I just talked about. And really saying, in the end, we couldn't fall in any of those models and that we have to be flexible, because there's a reality that also during the school year, depending on what happens with the COVID-19 situation, the pandemic, we could actually end up in any one of these three models during the school year. So, they said we have to be prepared and flexible to do any of these three things. And they said that ultimately, the goal, which is to balance that concept of the COVID-19 related health and safety risks with the risks of keeping students out of school. You know, the long-term, there was some concerns about the level of education students were getting during a full remote setting. And I think there was a general consensus that that was not the best for, for all of our students as a community and that we have to balance what students are losing in that scenario versus the health risks. And that, and that's a fine balance, that's a fine line for all of us to walk as we make these decisions about what we're gonna do in the fall. And again, obviously, this slide has the old ribbon, was from the Commissioner's presentation. So what, what's the goal? They've asked us to focus on in-person, to returning to these buildings. Returning to Codrill High School, returning to Codrill Elementary School with as many students as we possible can, possibly can. And have highlighted that we should focus preparations in an in-person model. And that doesn't mean we shouldn't look at a hybrid model and develop a full one, and develop a full remote learning plan, and be able to use any of those three if we need to, or if we decide to. But the focus should be a little bit on the in-person, is what DESI has tasked us with as a school district. So why do they feel that it's, at this time, it may be appropriate to return in-person? And again, this is from the commissioner's slide. The guidance had, when you actually read the full document, had a lot of medical literature that it referenced. And the medical literature really focused on these four key points. And I am not a medical professional. My goal here this evening isn't to give you a review of the medical information that's being presented. It's really just to say, DESI is using this medical information as part of their guidance for why they believe we should be able to, or have the ability to return it in an in-person model. So these four themes. Number one, schools do not appear to have played a major role in COVID-19 transmissions. Number two, in general, rates of COVID-19 infection are lower for children than they are for adults. Number three, if exposed, children may be less likely to become infected with COVID-19. And number four, if infected, children may be less likely to infect others with the disease. So this medical research that they present has actually kind of been the basis for some of the guidance that's going to come forward in terms of health and safety requirements and a possible in-person return. One thing the commissioner did say today is that next week, they actually are going to be doing a little bit of a, I don't know if it's a public service announcement. I don't know if that's the right way to phrase it, or, or an advertising campaign. But they're going to be putting out some information from the medical community that they're going to have representatives from infectious disease, representatives from the American Academy of Pediatrics, who are going to talk about these kind of four factors and why they believe or are supporting the concept of a possible in-person return to school. And, and they're going to share that with the superintendents to share with their communities, their teachers, their school committees. Obviously, we don't have that video yet, but they're saying that we should have that within the next week. I put this slide up, and I, this slide's actually in two places in the, in the, in the presentation. Because ultimately, what, what we're really saying, what the focus is going to be, is that we can maintain safety if we do these four things. That we use masks and face coverings, that we practice physical distancing or social distancing, that we have hand hygiene through hand washing and hand sanitizing, and that we really focus on staying home when sick. And that no one of these things mitigates the transmission of the virus by itself. It's a community, or a school community, working together to institute all four of these things that truly mitigates the possibility of transmission in a school. And then again, this is not a promise that there would be a transmission, or that someone would not become positive with COVID-19. Actually, the commissioner's talked a little about the, facing the reality of that may be a situation that any or all school districts face in the fall if students return to school, whether it be a staff member or a student. But ultimately, by doing these four things, you know, wearing masks and face coverings, practicing social distancing, practicing routine hand sanitizing, and staying home when sick, that we can help mitigate the spread of the disease in our schools and our community. So let's talk about some of the details on these four things, because they're really the key to any kind of in-person return. Whether it's a hybrid model where students are coming for, you know, part of a week, or part of a day, or every other week, whatever the hybrid model is that we select, or the full in-person model, these health and safety requirements would still be in place. So what are the requirements for masks? And the commissioner is very clear, DESI has clearly stated that these are requirements. These are not optional. They're not recommendations. So I'll kind of hit on things that they're saying are requirements versus a recommendation. So a requirement is all students, second grade above, have to wear masks. A requirement is that all adults have to wear masks. A requirement would be that the school should plan mask breaks during the day, and really be thoughtful about that, realizing that no one should probably be in a mask for six straight hours. That there are exceptions on the mask policy based on medical condition or disability. That all students, no matter their grade level, can, must wear their mask on the bus. And that parents and staff should provide their own masks. That's obviously a recommendation. That's not a requirement. Our thought process on that a little bit as we plan on returning, well, again, no matter what model it's in, unless it's full remote, is that we, the district would purchase probably some sort of a logoed mask at both, throughout, for all employees and for all students. That everybody get at least one mask from the district. And then obviously, we'd have disposal masks available for students who don't have their mask, or someone gets sick during the day, or they just lose their mask, whatever happens if they didn't have masks that, that day in school. Social distancing. In the social distancing, they, the aim is six feet, but they're establishing a minimum requirement of three feet. All desks must be spaced three feet apart in a school building. And that's, that is a requirement. And the desk must be facing forward. Then there's recommendations that you attempt to use larger spaces to create smaller groups. A recommendation of lunch in the classroom. But they, they're flexible on that and said, do what's best for your school and your facility and your building. You know, they said, everyone has different sized cafeterias. You know, maybe you can do some sort of a hybrid approach for lunch, where some, some portions eats lunch in the ca, in the cafeteria while another portion eats lunch in the classroom. And obviously, we haven't, I'm not making a formal proposal tonight. That's going to come through the development of plans of what we're going to do in some of these specific scenarios. But I wanted to point out that the lunch piece was a recommendation, not a requirement, that they eat in the classroom. And they said, ultimately, do what's best for your district, as long as you're maintaining the social distancing requirement. And then they said, when possible, again, this is a recommendation, establish groups and cohorts of students, so that students have less contact with a larger number of students during the school day. Obviously, this is easier to do for us, grades K through seven. You know, we're, we're in teams in grades six and seven, which creates some natural cohorts, which we could, you know, separate students within those cohorts. And obviously, at the elementary school, kids are assigned to a homeroom where they do spend a good part of their day. So cohorts are established. Much more difficult to do for us, eighth through 12, and especially, once again, the 10th, 11th, and 12th grade. There's just so many classes at that level that are multi-graded based on what the student's pursuing. So again, it's, it's not a requirement that you establish cohorts and groups, but there's a recommendation to try to do that based on that whole concept of having people have, as, as limited contacts as they can while also returning to school. In-person health and safety requirements, students and staff are required to exercise hand hygiene. So they are saying you're required to wash your hands or sanitize your hands, all staff, all students, at some points during the day. Now, they make some recommendations of when that should happen. So making that distinction of, they're saying your plan should require hand washing, but you can decide when, but here's some recommendations of when it should happen. Upon arrival to school, before eating, before putting on, taking off masks, before dismissal. You know, in terms of where we stand, now again, elementary schools are a little bit better positioned, because they have sinks in every classroom. Obviously, it's still time-consuming to wash hands and have all students wash their hands, but they also have a sink in every room that allows that to happen. That's not the case in the middle high schools, not a sink in every classroom. So it might be more hand sanitizing versus hand washing, and making sure that hand sanitizers are available throughout both, both buildings. In person, again, going on, nurse's office. What are the requirements are, that you have to have an isolation room. So in essence, it's going to have to become a COVID isolation room, separate from the nurse's office. So we're going to be in the process of identifying what those rooms are. You know, this is going to have some implications for us as we go forward in terms of spaces, and how we're going to identify some spaces, and we may have to reorganize some spaces within our buildings. Again, the elementary school is a little better situated than the middle high school in terms of establishing an isolation room. Just in terms of available space. You know, middle high school might cause, may do some more reshuffling to have to do that. Nurses will have access, and will have to use appropriate PPE. So if they're dealing with a student who is a possible COVID-19, they'll have to use the face shields, the masks, gloves, coats, and possibly goggles. And then any student or staff member who exhibits possible COVID-19 symptoms would have to be moved to the isolation room and then be sent home as appropriate. Cleaning and sanitizing. There's some more official guidance coming out on this, but they basically said, plan for frequent cleaning and sanitizing of high-touch surfaces, and provide hand sanitizer throughout the buildings, which we just talked about. And for the parents, I put this, this is the link to that EverClean Infection Prevention System. I actually showed, the committee saw this video that's linked in here at the February meeting. Because, and I think I'm sure at that point, because for two reasons. One, we were just starting to have conversations about the concept of COVID at that time. That, well, I think at that time, it was more something, the issue that was occurring in China, or at least that's what we knew. And if you remember, we had actually had a little bit of a sickness outbreak at the elementary school in terms of some influenza and some general sickness. And we were using this cleaning system and had disinfected the elementary school building a couple of times, did the middle high school. Did the middle high school do the once or twice. And so we do have this system, and actually, at that, at that time, we only had one of those foggers. And for the beginning of the school year, we've ordered four. We do not have four in our possession right now, but we're being told that we will have four in our possession for the opening of school. Two are backpack models and two are the handheld versions. So that will allow us to more frequently sanitize the facilities. And then the big piece, stay home if you are sick. Now, there was a lot of questions around screening. And right now, the guidance does not put any requirements on the school system to screen either staff or students prior to entering school. So they're not asking us to take temperatures. Their, the rationale actually is, is that a lot of those quick screeners for temperatures really almost just take a surface temperature or your skin temperature versus your internal temperature. There's a lot of false positives or false negatives. And that it's, so their recommendation is it's not a positive thing to do. And what we're going to actually be asking, as part of the plan, we'll actually be putting in some self-screening requirements for our staff and for parents in terms of making a decision whether you should stay home if you are sick. But with a clear messaging of, if you're feeling sick, you should stay home. So, you know, there's been no official statement in terms of like removing student attendance requirements in terms of the accountability system. But I think that's going to come. You know, they made it real clear that we can't be, we can't be sending clear messaging to stay home if you're sick, but then punishing people for, maybe punishes the wrong term. Holding people accountable for staying home if they're sick. You know, there's going to have to be some level of trust that people are doing that in an appropriate way, and then not being held accountable for that. So it all goes back to this whole concept, the slide you already saw from the commissioner. The real focus on, if you do, if you're doing these four things in conjunction, doing them well, that's going to mitigate the risk of the transmission of the disease and allow for an in-person return to school. So if we're using our masks and face coverings, if we're physical distancing, social distancing, using hand washing and hand sanitizing, staying home when we're sick, that these are the, these are the things we need to do and put into our plan for an in-person return. So all of that was about health and safety for an in-person return. A couple, a little bit of information on hybrid models and remote models. So a hybrid model, half the students would come one day or one week, or parts of a week, and other, and other students would come the other day, the other week, or the other parts of a week. While home, students would engage in remote learning. While in school, all students and staff would have to follow the health and safety requirements outlined above that we already talked about. And the remote model would have to be a little bit more robust in terms of maybe student grading, student work, student accountability. And we're going to look at a couple of hybrid models that I put out to the community through a survey. Remote learning model. Now, this is, the remote learning model has an A and a B. The A is full remote model for all students. You know, we hit a spike in cases. We have the second wave that we're seeing in other parts of the country. Comes back to Massachusetts. Massachusetts takes a step back, and the governor, through executive order, closes all schools. And we have to go to a full remote model. You know, then we have to develop what that plan would look like. And same concept of that full remote model would have to be more robust. So they're saying they're going to give us some more guidance from DESI's perspective of what it should look like. What the commissioner has talked about is, you know, requirements of a set schedule for our students and teachers in a full remote model. Requirements of both asynchronous and synchronous, direct instruction on new material. So some live, live connection, also some, you know, developing videos which teachers could, that students could watch, that a teacher does on a topic. And then assessment and grading of students. But then there's the B version, which is the remote learning for selected students. So if we, as a district, decide we're going to go back in a hybrid setup or in a full in-person return, parents and students are going to have the option to not return to school. And this, they're saying this option really should be for students or family members who are medically compromised, or just have concerns about returning. And this is something that the commissioner, that's, it's been a little unclear over the last couple of weeks. But I, I think he gave it some clarity today. And the clarity today was what I thought, what I was clear about a week and a half ago, that I became less clear about five days ago, and I became more clear about today. So I probably, I was probably just very unclear in all the things I just said. But also, there's been some wavering on this concept of, are parents truly going to have a choice? Is a parent going to be able to say, I, I'm not sending my student to school, and you, the school district, are responsible to provide them with a remote learning platform? And the answer we received today was really that that is, that is true. That is yes. Parents, at some point in this process, the next three to four weeks, you know, we did an initial survey, which I'm going to show the results of tonight, but we're going to have to do another survey, probably going to do two more surveys, but there'll be a final survey that says to parents where they have to formally commit, yes, we're sending our students back to school based on the plan you've presented, and that you're going to implement, or no, we're not, and you're responsible for providing those students with a remote learning opportunity. Right now, we're thinking that this kind of model would be some sort of an online learning platform, one that we currently use in the district for some students with some social emotional challenges, and that we've used in our, in our CAP program. At grade six through 12, is a program called Edge Newity. That actually provides a, an extensive catalog of courses. Really, it covers the gamut of high school courses you can offer. Those courses are fully developed with embedded videos of instruction, opportunities for independent practice, opportunities for supportive practice. Assessments are all built into the program, into the platform. And our thought process is that those students, especially at the grade six through 12, where we've used this Edge Newity platform, and we're aware of it, and we are comfortable with it in terms of what it offers, that we would, we would place those students on that platform with some support from either tutoring or teachers. And that, that's something we'd probably use for those students who select to stay home. At the elementary level, we're still investigating different opportunities. Edge Newity does have an elementary platform, K through five, but it's a little different. And it's a little newer. They just adopted it two years ago, where their high school platform is more fully developed. The state is also in the process of working with a company to contract with them. The commissioner said that on the phone call today, that they hope to, within the next week, announce that they've come to an agreement. week, announce that they've come to an agreement with a online provider that districts would have to pay for. So we would be charged by, but it would happen, it would be a state level program run through, run through DESI that the school district would have to pay. They haven't, they said today somewhere between $200 to $400 a student to place them on that And that would be an opportunity for students and families who are selecting to not return to school. I added this slide in last week after I met with the faculties before I met with the teachers, when the commissioner hesitated a little bit, because there was a little bit of a statement for, for a couple of days that parents were going to have a choice, but they would have to provide a medical doctor's note to say that their student had to stay home. You know, it had to be medically supported. But as I said, the commissioner today made a pretty clear statement that is not the case, that it is just parent choice. So families in consultation with their medical providers will ultimately make the decision as to whether their children will attend in person instruction or whether their children will continue in remote learning. And that's language is word from word from the guidance. So next steps, at that time was a parent survey, which we've done. I'll show you some of those results tonight. Starting to meet our reopening committees, I'll tell you, and I'll show you some of the work that started at that level. And then future guidance. So DESI says in the next couple of weeks, we're going to get guidance on all of these things. I was a little surprised, but, but I was happy. I appreciated it. They actually released the guidance for special ed programs today. So that, that was just released this afternoon. And they say they are going to give us guidance on what they're calling a reopening checklist, a process for handling COVID-19 positive cases in the school community. And I think that's really going to be a huge guidance for us, because then that goes back to that guidance, I think is coming from medical professionals. In terms of establishing your policy of, okay, you ask, student's been diagnosed as COVID-19 positive, what happens next? You know, does his classmates quarantine for 14 days? You know, the extreme would be the school closes while the school district closes and goes to remote for two weeks. Is it just people who that person's had close contact with? And the CDC definition of close contact is closer than 16 feet, closer than six feet for more than 15 minutes. And who, you know, almost does some contact tracing. So they're, I think they're going to give us some real specifics on what they're recommending as protocols for dealing with someone who, if there's a positive case anywhere in the school community. And then also dealing with the student who has a fever, but isn't COVID positive. You know, what, how long do they, should they stay out? Should they be out for 24 hours? Should they be out for 72 hours? So they're going to supposedly give us real, the specific guidance on that information, which will go into our plans. And then the other guidance that everyone's waiting for is transportation. You know, the CDC put a little bit of shock into the educational community with their guidance about a month ago now, saying that students could only sit every other seat diagonally across from each other, which, you know, put 10 or 12 kids on a bus, which was going to make it real hard to transport students to school. You know, DESI's hinting at, the guidance isn't out yet, but the commissioner today hinted at, in essence, one student per seat and then the possibility of maybe families being together, but there's been different information on whether siblings will be able to sit together on the bus. But one person per seat still isn't great, but it's definitely better than one student every other seat. So some of this is the future guidance and, you know, hopefully the department will stick with its own timeline of getting this guidance out. As I said, I was happy today to see the special ed guidance come out. So it shows they are working on these things and, and trying to get them out. Hopefully, we would get all this guidance in the next two weeks to help us plan as we go forward. All right, I, I've said a lot of words, so I guess maybe I'll take a break here before I go into some other things in terms of reopening. So I do want to show you, our reopening committees have identified some district priorities. I'll share the survey results and a template we've made for our reopening plan. But I think before I show you those documents, I would take some questions. I think questions or comments, I saw Jason has raised his hand.
Thanks for, this is great. My, it's a global question, like what is the committee's role when you're done with this? So go through the thing, are we, is this going to be a policy that we're going to have to enact? Is this something we're voting on or is this a FYI?
Yeah, this is a, it's a great, it's a great question. I mean, ultimately, I feel like the committee has to weigh in on this. It has to be part of the decision-making process. So I think eventually, once the full plan is developed, I, we'd have to come to the committee, have a presentation of that plan and have an approval of that plan. And, and that might have to happen over a couple of meetings. So we might have to have, so I'm talking out loud and I'm open to obviously suggestions of the committee and the chair in terms of the thought process of how we approach this. But I do feel like, you know, as soon as we can, have a public presentation of the plan, almost like a public hearing, give people the opportunity to weigh in and then have a second meeting, probably, you know, timing's going to be hard because we have to deal with all this guidance coming out, we have to deal with the reality of maybe coming back to school in September, things are going to have to happen quickly. So there might have to be a piece of having a, almost like a public hearing and then having a meeting a few days later and make a final almost recommendation, you have me bring a formal recommendation to the committee on how we're going to proceed and have the committee support that.
All right, thank you. I think that.
If, if I feel, I'm open to, so that is my personal, that's my personal opinion on how we should proceed. There's no specific guidance on that and I don't know what other districts are doing. I actually haven't talked about it with other districts. So DESI has not said that your school committee has to officially vote your plan, they just said you have to send it to us. But I feel like that's what makes sense, but I'm open to the opinions of the committee on that.
Do we know if the MASC made any guidance on this?
I have not seen any on it yet, but I, I wouldn't be surprised if we see some come out.
Okay.
I think it would be important for the committee to have input or any type of input in, to be updated as this goes along, you know, that, that might be, mean several meetings. Because if we get a meeting at the end and there's something that is just vehemently opposed to, or we might have a suggestion for the reopening committees to change it at that point, it'd be a burden on the administration. So our goal for our next meeting is to have an in-person meeting as our regular August meeting. But for, for the constraints of time, I wouldn't be opposed to having Zoom meetings for these updates, just so we don't, so we would be more convenient for everybody and we could also weigh in on short meetings with the updates.
And also just remember, there are two, there's two members who are on the grant, the larger reopening committee, who's meeting on a weekly basis.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for Scott on what we've seen so far? Okay, no one? Okay, I actually have one or two. Scott, did they mention anything about, I saw in future guidance, you mentioned about ventilation. Has there been any talk in the, with the reopening committees as of yet about outdoor class time, when the weather permits?
Yep, there's, so there's clearly been a, there's been a clear messaging of if you can get outside, you should certainly do that during the day. So if teachers wanted to go outside, we would be supportive of that, opening windows if available. You know, again, the elementary school is a brand new building with a state-of-the-art ventilation system. The middle high school's not, does not have a state-of-the-art ventilation system. But yeah, so that's clearly been recommendations of, you know, when you have the opportunity to go outside, you should take advantage of that if you can.
I think that'd be a good idea. The other thing is I know you can open the windows as the weather permits, but with the HVAC system, I mean, this, maybe this is a question for Dave, is there an option for an all fresh air?
And I, I have to get more information on the, and Brad might be on the way on this. I have to get more information on the middle high school. Both systems take in, I know both the middle high school system and the elementary system take in outside air. There's actually been some concerns at the elementary school that the way the system, the system is actually designed to run with the windows closed.
It's a tight system.
And.
Big building.
So the, right now, you know, we have to play, play this out and work through it a little bit for summer school, because we are doing in-person summer school this time next week. We've told the summer school teachers if they want to open up their windows to get some increased ventilation, they can. The system is taking in outside air, so we're going to have to go up with a recommendation on what we're going to do in terms of opening windows, because there's some concerns, well, the system isn't designed, won't design, it won't actually work properly if every window in the elementary school was open. So there might be some recommendations of the concept that is taking in outside air. But we, we don't, we don't have a formal position on, on that yet, but it's a good point and something we're definitely looking at.
Yeah, because I mean, even like your, your basic window air conditioner or your car air conditioner, it has a button for using recycled air from the inside space or fresh air. And I think that would, just a little thing like that might help a lot.
Most systems do take in outside air and integrate the outside air into their system.
Okay. And the other one, the other question I have is about face shields for teachers that might want to use them instead of a mask. And do you have a, is the reopening committee have a position on that of requiring mask or with a face shield DRA?
Right now, the DESI guidance is masks are a requirement and a face shield does not replace a mask. Use a face shield with a mask. But I think we're going to, we're going to push on that a little bit to see, so I think that is an accommodation that some teachers would prefer in terms of having to use a face shield versus a mask. So definitely something being talked about, but I will say that right now, the official statement on that from DESI in terms of their guidance is a face shield cannot replace a mask, but can certainly be used in combination with.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have on this section. Anyone else?
Okay. Sorry, James has said.
So two things, one, following up on, on what you just talked about with that, I think Scott, it's important to be open-minded with that as well, depending on, because this is a, this is all new. So I mean, I, I don't think people give a lot of consideration to what it's like to have to talk in a mask all day long. And, and I think that that option, I think this is something that once you get going, if masks become an option, there's, there's going to need to be some kind of flexibility with that, I think, because this is like, everybody's figuring out as they go. You know, we can look at what we think it's going to be like, but we're not going to know until we're actually doing it.
And I'm, I'm personally, I'm, I personally support the, the face mask versus the, the shield in lieu of a face mask, if that's what teachers wanted to do. I'm just giving you what the position has been before we've been told from DESI. And we can make a decision on how much we want to, how much we want to and can deviate from that. Personally, I actually agree that I, I personally would have no problem with a face shield versus a face mask.
Well, I guess to my point though, you were talking earlier about having masks for staff and, and, you know, boxes of masks, the generic mask to wear later on. But I think that to remain flexible with the fact that, you know, if a couple of staff have face masks, other people may go, oh, I actually, that might work and just keep that room of flexibility there a little bit, not knowing exactly what people are going to be able to use or, or want, because they may not know until that, that use come, people may put on a mask and go, I can't wear this thing on my head all day, I just can't do that, I, I need to wear something else. So if the option is there, I just think keeping the, the window of flexibility open is a good idea.
I am flexible.
The other, the other point was, which, health and safety first, I, I understand fully 100%, but whereas as far as with your committee or with DESI, any conversation about academics and expectation? I know the unions having a lot of conversations with the state about it and I understand it's sort of back burner to what's going on right now, but I also know that time is going to go fast over the next month and a half.
Well, I think in terms of an in-person return, the concept of an in-person return is we're returning to school as normally as we can and the expectation would be as much as possible, realizing there's going to be some loss of time in terms of if we're limiting movement and transitions and hand washing and hand sanitizing. So there's going to be, that's going to create a loss of time or momentum, that an in-person return would be, the goal would be to, you know, implement the curriculum as much as possible and maintaining, you know, the prior standards of rigor and expectations.
Right, but there's a lot of, there's a lot of talk about the expectation of what those kids missed in that last quarter of school and how that's going to be made up. So that's a, adding more to what's already going to be difficult to fit in is a conversation that should be had as well. Where does that expectation fall?
I think that's a, I think that's a farther down the line conversation in terms of, I don't know if you're going long-term in terms of accountability and MCAS and whether you were going to take a test or not take a test, really hasn't been discussed yet. My thought is, you know, if I was going to guess off the top of my head, which maybe I shouldn't do, is that I don't know if we'll see MCAS testing next year. But in terms of measuring where kids are, DESI is actually working, so the commissioner told us today, he's working with a couple of different platforms like an NWA or an iReady to make free, like, what's it, available to all school districts so that you could, he's going to recommend, he says, I mean, requirement, but there is going to be a recommendation from DESI that sometime between September or October, you do some assessment in terms of where students are and then make some decisions in terms of your curriculum with the realization of, you know, behind, I mean, you never get, I don't know if you're ever going to catch up, you're going to do what you can to keep moving kids along where they are in the continuum. And there's going to be, have to be a process there where you establish where are they and then move them forward. I think teachers do an outstanding job of that. So my sense is, and my argument would be, is that our teachers are going to meet the students where they are and then continue to move them forward in the curriculum in terms of where they are. I don't know if that's a, I don't know if that's that, if that's what you were looking as a discussion or?
Well, I just wanted to know what kind of discussion is out there right now, because I think quite often in this field, teachers all of a sudden will get thrown this expectation that wasn't expected and.
I don't think, I don't think there's going to be an expectation that people, I think there's an understanding that students aren't going to be where they would have been if we were in school all the time and we're going to have to be ready to adjust to that.
So I didn't, I don't, again, like most of it, I don't think there is an answer. I was just wondering if, where the discussion was at and what.
Those are the discussion pieces that are happening, happening around that.
Okay.
Anything else?
I see nothing, none.
All right, so I'm going to, I have three other documents I want to show you of this concept of review of initial fall guidance. One is the reopening committees identified some planning principles. So these kind of guiding principles that we want to say as we go, as we go through this process of planning and trying to answer these questions, what do we want to focus on? So what the reopening committee establishes about school planning principles. Number one, health and safety and wellbeing of our school community is the top priority. Take into account the needs of all stakeholders, students, families and staff. Ensure that plans are sustainable and take into account the mental, physical, social, emotional needs of our school community. Builds on the Cal Republic Schools core values outlined in our educational blueprint of all students can be successful, learning is ongoing lifelong, decisions should be made in the best interest of students, everyone should be treated with dignity and respect, school, home and community partnerships are vital for continuous learning and growth. That the plan incorporates reflections and lessons learned during the period of the school closure, specifically as we look at any kind of remote learning in a hybrid or full remote situation. Ultimately, that the planning allows for flexibility and fluidity in how we deliver instruction and strives for a continuum of services, acknowledging the varying student needs across the district and responding to differences in age appropriate ways. That goes kind of back to that opening statement I made of, there's a reality piece of we could be in any one of these three, three and a half models during the next school year and we have to be ready to make that transition. And then intentional about matters of equity and meaning the needs of all students. You know, that was really a focus of the, of the spring guidance of, and it's really still a focus of the state in terms of, you know, equity on many, many levels, on, on the very, probably the most rudimentary level of, are we, you know, we're going to be able to have every student have a device if we have to go remote? Is every student going to have internet access? Those types of things to, and so those are, this is what we kind of identified as our, our planning priorities as we go forward. We also did a survey. We also did a survey of parents of our return to school. So I'm gonna do a quick overview of a couple, I'm not gonna go through each survey question we asked, but I'm gonna hit on a couple of them. The first one was, the, the question really said, this is just a response, the question said, you know, are you, where, where do you stand in terms of return to school in person, based on the health and safety requirements of, so that I spelled them out for people, three feet social distancing, staying home if you're sick, appropriate hand hygiene, and wearing face masks. So based on that, say though, were those conditions were put into place, those kind of four things that are highlighted, that I highlighted a couple of times in the initial presentation, would you, what's your position on whether your students are gonna return to school in September? So 68, we had 620 total responses, which I think is great. And, so we have 68% said yes, there is their intention to return in the fall, based on those health and safety requirements being in place. 5% said no, and 27% said unsure. And the, and there was a comment section after this, I didn't put all the comments in. We've linked the entire survey for the committee, so you can see individual responses. But I'm, obviously, I'm just looking at the overall generic responses. But when you look at some of the comments for the insurers, they really varied along two kinds of themes. One theme was, I just, you know, there's not enough information yet, I wanna know the plan. I wanna see, what is your hybrid model gonna look like? What's your in-person model gonna look like, was more information than just you're gonna follow these basic health and safety requirements? And then some people's response to unsure was just, I don't know where we're gonna be in six weeks. So, really, my, what might drive my decision is what happens with the pandemic and the virus over the next six weeks? So their individual responses as to why they were unsure kind of varied along those two lines. But those were the two basic themes you saw in people's responses who gave an unsure. This is actually, if you asked me, if you asked me to, to make a prediction three, two weeks ago, I would have said 70, 25, 5. So I was not surprised by these results, in terms of what people's thoughts were, in terms of returning to school. The second question was just about health concerns, you know, is there someone in your family, your immediate family, or your student who has a health concern that may play a role in your, answer the question above? And that was an 80, 20 split. 80% of the respondents said, no, there were no health concerns for their own students or within their family that impacted their answer above. 20% said there was. And it was interesting, the 20% that said there was, some of them said, yeah, there's a, there's a concern, but I still said yes. We're gonna send our students back to school. Some of them said, there is a concern, but no, we're not going back. And, I, I, so, you know, that was just interesting to, to take a look at. Hybrid model, and this is, I have, I have a big picture takeaway, which I guess I'll give first, is, in the survey, we gave four choices on a hybrid model. Half-days every day, alternating days, so like an A day and a B day, A group goes on Monday, B group goes on Tuesday, A group goes on Wednesday, following that pattern. Two days in, three days remote. And how I described that in the survey was, an A group would go to school on Monday and Tuesday, a B group would go to school on Thursday and Friday, Wednesday would be a remote day for everyone, everyone would be home remote. And, and the kind of theory behind that one is that Wednesdays and the weekend would kind of become your full sanitation days in between groups, where we would fog the entire building, both buildings. And, and that was kind of the thought process of that option. And then alternating weeks. Obviously, half-days every day got the most, and I asked people to rank them one to four. So what's your top choice, what's your least favorite choice from the orange four models? You know, half-day every day's got the highest level of first choice. But you notice it also got the second highest level of fourth choice. So, my point is, the numbers here are pretty spread. And, and I think no matter what hybrid model is selected, there's gonna be a pop, a segment of the population that's gonna say, that model doesn't work for me, it's not, it wouldn't be what I chose. And I don't think there's any way around that, I don't think there's any answers to that. And I think this survey result kind of supports that, that, you know, people looked at it and said, you know, what do they think? You know, they looked at their own personal circumstances and said, what's the best for me and my family and my kids? But that response was, was very different. Hold on a second, I'm gonna try to mute everybody, forget some background noise. Yeah.
Scott, I, I think though, when you look at those numbers, that first half-day every day is a pretty resounding number as a first choice above any of the other choices. Even if you add two or three of the other ones together, it's pretty close to that total, there's not that much of a difference.
My, my only concern on that, though, is in some ways, it's, I just saw I'm saying this, not saying we're, we're not gonna choose that one. In many ways, that's the most concerning one, because it's very difficult to clean between groups. And some of the concept of the hybrid model is cleaning between groups. That's like the biggest negative of the half-day every day.
Scott, I raised my hand, but I can, I guess I can just jump in. My other concern with the half-day every day is, you know, we just talked about how we're gonna lose time with, you know, having to have kids wash hands and sanitize, and, and just, by the time the kids get settled in and settle down, like, how much quality actual teaching time is there gonna be if they're only in a half-day every day? It just seems to be, I worry about transition. So it's actually funny, because my personal choices were the exact opposite of this. Like I said, alternating weeks, because I feel like give them a full weekend, and then they could have like a week at home where they're reviewing. It'll be interesting to see what teachers think. I have a couple of teacher friends who've already said alternating weeks would be their preference. But half-days every day concerned me, one, for cleaning in between the groups, and two, just because I feel like they wouldn't have very much time actually get content between cleaning and getting settled in, and then, oh, half-day's done, so.
So this, this, this development of the hybrid model has been given to the scheduling subcommittee. So they've obviously have the survey, they have the survey results, and they're gonna use that as part of their information as they go forward to develop a hybrid schedule. And then, those are the only two things specifically that I wanted to show from the survey. There's some other questions about the remote learning experience in the spring, which the Teaching and Learning Committee is gonna use as we build our full remote learning plan for the fall. But I wanted to focus on kind of the, are you gonna return to school and?
Yeah, but I, I think Scott, when you look at those survey results, if you look at, at, at the, the challenging part, okay? So back where you just were.
I'm only going to look at each question individually, if the committee wants me to go through each one. I'll do that.
Yeah, that's fine. So, James, wait, James, finish your point.
My point is that if you look at the number that, you're jumping around there, though, man.
Yeah, I wanna say which, which question do you wanna look at?
Anything about the, anything about the remote learning. So if you look at the challenging, right? If you look at the challenging for, for all of these questions, from somewhat challenged to extremely challenged, they're all, the majority of the votes, very few were like slightly challenged or not at all. Your percentages are really high, so when you're talking about this, you also have to be looking at the fact that there were a lot of people that had a really hard time with this, children and parents. And, and teachers as well, I think, in, in this, in this aspect. And I think that that schedule does relate a lot, and how you're gonna have kids into school does relate a lot to the answers to a lot of these questions as well, though.
Okay. I think that's fair.
Scott, can you go back up to the hybrid section, please? Right there. Now, your hybrid model preference, is this, when you say half-days every day, is that for our entire student population, the regular population would always, that would be in there? Or are you talking about separating into two groups?
You'd be separating into two groups. So half the kids would come for a more, almost like double sessions.
I got you.
Half the kids would come for the morning session, half the kids would come for the afternoon session.
And, and I would agree with Jen, with the difficulties, particularly more so in elementary with that than in middle, high school. I, I think it'd be a schedule issue, but you know, I don't know if you're looking at variances between the two schools as well, because I, I, you know, elementary kids for half a day every day is, is, I could see that being, I agree fully with what you were saying earlier.
Yeah, and I, and I think we're gonna have to look at, we're gonna have to look at all options in terms of like, so you just mentioned, you know, can you do different things at different buildings? I, I think, we might even have to talk about that in terms of the overall plan of in-person versus hybrid versus remote. You know, is it possible that the elementary returns in person and the middle, high school returns remote, or on, on remote, hybrid? I, I, I mean, so I, I think my personal preference is that we have some sort of a model that goes forward with kids in school. And DESI's actually kind of said, if you're, if a district's gonna choose a full remote learning plan, they'd have to actually provide some documentation as to why they're making that choice. And some, almost some medical information about, you are a hard-hit community by the disease. So, I, I would be, I would, I, at this point, what I know right now would be real hard for me to recommend a full remote model. So I think we're really talking about hybrid versus in-person. Obviously, they're telling us to focus on trying to do an in-person return. But maybe, maybe the answer, to your point, James, is that I think we have to consider there could be different answers, it's different, there's a possibility that there could be different answers at different buildings.
Well, right now, DESI's preferences for the entire state is to reopen fully, right?
Correct. So they're, they're encouraging, they're clearly encouraging school districts to do what you can, to return as many schools, many kids to school as possible, and plan for an in-person return. Absolutely.
And if we run into problems, then we could implement our, one of our other three, two other plans.
Correct.
Right. Okay.
I just wanted to add one other final thing on this. I've had multiple parents contact me since the survey went out, just saying that their one concern is that they have multiple children in the school system, and that their fear is that their kids would be on different schedules. So, say we went half-days, and they'd have one kid in the morning and one kid in the afternoon, or you know, alternating weeks, but their kids are on different weeks. And so, I didn't bring this up at the reopening committee, but perhaps you could put a bug in this, or, or even just be thinking in the backend of how we would assign kids to groupings if we go to this way, to make sure that families could be on the same schedules, if that's what they chose.
And, and Jen, I, I actually got that question a couple of times at the parent meeting. And my response, my response at that time is still the same, is that, obviously, if we chose, if different schools did different models for some reason, obviously, then there'd be differences. But if, if, you know, if everyone's doing a every-other-day hybrid, you know, we, we'd have to come up with a way to break that down, we'd probably start alphabetically. But then we would definitely try to put kids in the same families on the same schedule, that that would have to be a priority. So we understand that, I, we fully understand that's a concern, and that we'd have to address that priority of, if it's not a full in-person return, then any scheduling that happens for families, we need to develop some consistency in terms of that scheduling for most families.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, moving on.
And then the last thing I wanna show you is I've developed a reopening plan template, because the reality is, this is gonna have to start happening pretty quickly, so we have to start putting some things down. We have to move from a, a theoretical discussion to, here's what's gonna happen. So what I've done is, I established sort of like an outline of what should be in our final plan. And then I've assigned each of the subgroups part of the tasks. So for example, and I'm not gonna take you through this whole document, but just wanna give you a sense of what we're gonna, what we're gonna look to complete at the end, is the full return to school in person. There'll be an introduction, which I'll write, and then health and safety requirements. We're gonna make a statement about, these are the rules around masks and face coverings. And that reopening committee is actually gonna write that. I'm gonna, we're gonna establish social distancing policies, hand hygiene, cleaning and sanitizing the building. What's the rules about staying home when you're sick? It will have some information there, almost like you're screening. How do you screen yourself to make that decision if I should stay home? What's the schedule, how could the schedule be different in a full in-person return at the elementary school, at the middle high school? Et cetera, et cetera. And so we're gonna start filling in this template with information as we build our plan. So this is, this is the format of what our plan will look like in the end. There's a lot here, because we have to have three, three and a half types of plans. We have to have our full in-person return, we have to have our hybrid plan, and we have to have our remote plan with two options. Full remote for everybody, school closure, and then remote for those whose families would choose it. So, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna start filling this template in and putting some information in here. The first, the first piece of information in here is the principles, principles and priorities, which I, we identified. So over the next few weeks, we're gonna start filling this template up. So, and you mentioned about possibly meeting before our August meeting, that we could look at having a meeting at the end of July, and maybe see where we are, and looking at some of the initial parts of the plan as it gets developed.
That sounds good. I mean, if, if we have information that we can consider, like I said, doing a Zoom meeting would be fine by me for that purpose.
Scott, I, I was not at the last meeting, I was looking at this document earlier, when you sent the information out. And I, I don't know exactly who's on that committee, but this is a daunting task, and it's just, whoever is doing this is gonna require some special thanks, because this is huge. You, you don't even have the guidance for what you're trying to develop right now. You're working with it as it's being developed. And this is a pretty challenging task, so to anybody involved in this, I, I mean, would, this is, this is a lot of time and a lot of effort to come up with something, so.
And we have teachers, and parents, and parents, actually, we've had a lot. So I established a parent, I, I don't know if I gave you a full answer on what I did with the parent group, because I actually had 28 parents who wanted to be part of some of the committees, which I think is really great. But we also were trying, we wanna make the committees nimble enough that they're not, each subcommittee has 20 people in it, or 25 people, because sometimes those are hard meetings to facilitate and to get things done. And this reality piece, we need to get things done. So I, I actually established a, what I'm calling a parent advisory committee, that I'm meeting with on a weekly basis. And we had our first meeting this week. And, so, but it's great that we have 28 parents who wanna assist on, on this stuff as we go along as well. And so it's teachers, administrators, parents. We have kind of a fire, kind of a police, kind of a board of health. So there really is a cross-section of the community that is helping to try to put this together. Anything else on the review of the initial fall guidance?
No, not for me. I think I've, I've asked my questions. But it'll be interesting to see what comes, what comes forth. Right.
Alright, so I'm gonna move on to budget updates, if that's okay?
Yep.
I don't, yeah, I don't see any hands, so I will move on. Alright. At the town meeting on June 29th, I know you were all there, you know this, the town voted approval of the FY21 budget of $24,237,990, which was the budget that was approved by the school committee in March. We know that we'll be facing possible reductions at a fall town meeting once the state sets its local aid numbers, including chapter 70. You know, interestingly, on the commissioner's call again today, they're really saying they don't think we're gonna see anything from the state on chapter 70 until the end of August the earliest. And they were saying, say, maybe even early September, which is really troublesome for many school districts. But that, that was the information we're getting. So I, I don't have anything new on that as compared to last time we met. But the new piece of information we do have is, as part of the release of the fall reopening guidance, the, the governor released CARES Act monies to all school districts in the amount of $225 per pupil, which actually comes to, for us, to $360,000. And this money can be spent or used to help you return to school in an in-person model. Technically, the money's supposed to be spent by December 31st, because that was part of the CARES Act. But examples of how we're thinking we're gonna, well, examples of how we're gonna spend this money. But examples of how we're thinking we're gonna, well, examples of how we're gonna spend this money. So in terms of returning in person, in kindergarten and first grade, we had all tables. And the tables weren't gonna really meet the guidance of the three-foot distancing and all students facing forward. So we've purchased desks for kindergarten and first grade to ensure that we can meet social distancing requirements as outlined in the guidance. This funding could also possibly help us funding a remote learning platform for those students who choose not to return to school, like that edutiny platform, or the state's platform that they're gonna develop and send out to us. So there'll be more information coming on how this money will be utilized. But I want the committee to be aware that the governor did actually release some additional funds for school districts to utilize by December 31st. And that's really all I have, because there's not a lot new in terms of budget.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments on the budget updates? Okay, seeing none. Class of 2020, future plans.
Okay. So we are excited that we have graduation coming up on August 1st. It's gonna be an in-person event. Another in-person event that we're gonna have, which is not on the agenda, but I figured I'd throw it out there, is we actually got approval from the board of health to do our drama production. So we're gonna do a limited seating drama performance, the one that got canceled in the spring on July 28th. And what they've said for us is no more than 100 people. Everyone who attends has to wear masks. They have to be socially distant, more than six feet in the auditorium. Family, immediate household members can sit together. No pre-event celebration, no post-event celebration. Once the event's over, you're gonna, gonna leave. So we are, we are gonna be having the drama performance on July 28th. So that's gonna be an exciting week for us. We have drama performance on July 28th. We're gonna do convocation awards ceremony for the seniors on the Friday night before graduation, the 31st. And then we're gonna do graduation on August 1st. Last couple of years, I've been sharing with the committee the future plans. You know, obviously, we're not gonna look at each student and where they're going. But the summary, the committee has that in their background. But as a summary, we are gonna have 99 students graduate on August 1st for our in-person ceremony that we talked about last time. And we're gonna have, interesting to know, we have 99 kids graduating. We started this year with 99 kids in the senior class. So we did not lose any seniors at any point during the year, and specifically, we're actually happy about that in terms of the closure. There were some students, some of our seniors, who we had to give some additional supports at the end to get them through, but we do have all 99 students who started the year graduating with us on August 1st. 22% of those students will be attending two-year public schools. 36% will be attending four-year public schools. 21% will be attending four-year private schools. A little higher percentage for us, here, 5% going into the military, five students this year. That's a little higher number for us than usual. 1% go, one student going to a specific trade school. And 14% unknown are going into the workforce. It's kind of an overall summary of the graduating class of, future plans of graduating class of 2020. I will say one piece of information that we did not put together this year, and it was just we, we had a hard time getting the information from the students, because they weren't in school, is we generally do an accept, we give the committee a list of every school that our students were accepted to. We just didn't, we weren't able to get that list together in a way that we felt was representative of the entire school district, because students just didn't report everything to us. We usually get that from them while they're there, and during the closure, we just couldn't get all that information of every school they were accepted to. Because I think it's a nice thing to see the range of schools that students were accepted to versus where they may choose to attend. But we were able to get their future plans in terms of what they're planning on doing next year.
All right, well, it's good information. It's an odd year this year anyway, so I do like the zero down the bottom under did not graduate.
Yep, so I said, we were very, we were very excited that every senior started the year with us is gonna graduate.
Right. All right, so moving on to recommendations from superintendent.
Okay, so our last agenda item for tonight is you know, in our last couple of meetings, the committee reviewed the HEROES Act resolution proposed by the APC. At the, at the meeting, the committee asked me to draft a version, a revised version. So I've given a couple of options for the committee to review. One was actually developed by the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. They actually adopted or suggested a revised version of the HEROES Act resolution that they were asking school committees to possibly support. And then I actually wrote a revised version based on our discussions at the last meeting. So I put these two out to the committee and, and, you know, we'll follow the will of the committee in terms of whether you want to take action on either one of these two resolutions. Do you want me to pull both up? I can.
Yes, yes. Yeah, can you, can you pull them both up for us?
I can't pull them up against each other, but I can certainly pull them up to look at.
Okay, thank you. All right. This is the one from the
This is the one from Massachusetts School Committees, yep.
Whereas if schools start to reopen this fall in the midst of the COVID-19 pandemic, it is the responsibility of each school district to do so safely and responsibly, and whereas it is the responsibility of the state to ensure that each school district is able to pay for the enormous additional staffing, transportation, and material expenses required to do this. And whereas the state cannot expect mandatory COVID-19 safety guidelines to be followed without also ensuring that each school district has the funds required to implement these guidelines. Therefore, let it be resolved that the state must guarantee every school district full reimbursement for whatever COVID-19 expenses are required to follow state mandates. We must ensure statewide school reopening that is safe, responsible, and equitable. There can be no unfunded mandates for COVID-19.
Take a motion to approve as written.
You want to see the other one first?
You want to bundle them together and approve them together?
Well, we, we can approve, we can approve both of them, or we can approve one, or we can approve none.
I would, I would, I would suggest to do them separately since they're separate.
Okay.
I'll second.
All right. This is a roll call vote for accepting the MASC resolution. James?
Aye.
Jason?
Sorry, I, I thought we were gonna discuss, but it's okay.
We can discuss.
You're right, actually, you're right. I should have, I should have done that, I'm sorry. My fault. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any more discussion on this?
I was just worried, I, I thought it was a one or the other type deal here.
I don't think we have to pick one or the other, do we, Scott, or?
No, I mean, ultimately, if the school committee agrees with the sentiments of both, they could approve both. I mean, there's a similar sentiment to both, but they are a little different. That is the will of the committee of, as you said, Andy, you can support both, you can just select one, or you can choose to take no action at all.
Yeah, it's really up to the pleasure of the committee, so.
Yeah, and I don't have, I honestly don't have a specific recommendation. For me, I mean, I would be supportive of either one or both.
So the one from the MSA, MASC, we'd just be adding our school committee's name onto their resolution?
Yes.
The other one, we'd be creating that resolution to pass on?
Correct.
Oh, okay, that might sway my, my decision, but. Any other discussion on that? On this resolution?
I'm good, thanks.
Stephanie?
I'm good, thank you.
Okay.
Listen, when the, when the state, all this basically says is
Sorry, hey, James, sorry about that. That was my fault.
That's all right, that's all right. I get the point. Nah. When the state puts out mandates, it, they have to fund those mandates. That's basically what this is saying, is they're gonna say that we have to do this, then they should be supporting the funding to make sure that those things happen the right way. To me, that's what this says.
I agree with you, and actually, to another point, which I didn't think of until right now, these are actually two separate
Yes.
Two, two separate, but they go to two separate destinations. The one that Scott crafted, it actually goes to the federal government. You know, to pass another stimulus bill.
That's why I think they should be separate.
Right, I agree with you, okay. All right, so any further discussion? Okay, seeing none. We'll start the vote again. Roll call, James?
They'll aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So it's unanimous acceptance.
Okay, and then the second one, because this is, this was more based on our discussion from the last meeting.
Okay, you're gonna have to
Want me to read?
Why don't you read it this time?
Whereas our students' needs are even greater now after public schools and colleges were shut down in March in response to the COVID-19 pandemic. Whereas in the upcoming academic year, many students will need enhanced educational opportunities, technology, health, and guidance services. And whereas the federal, state, and local governments share responsibility for making sure all students receive the education to which they are entitled and called for in the Massachusetts State Constitution. And those governments have been assisted financially by the federal government of the United States. Therefore, be resolved that the carbon school committee hereby supports a second federal stimulus plan to ensure that state, sorry, to ensure that the state of Massachusetts can fully fund public education pre-K through higher education at the level necessary to maintain current staffing and services.
Thank you.
I make a motion to support the resolute, the revised resolution based on the HEROES Act.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Further discussion?
I do.
Okay, Jason?
This actually is the same thing, I have the same concern pretty much that I had last time. I know that last time I was sticking to the point where it said we're supporting the whole HEROES Act. I feel like this does the exact same thing. Supporting a second federal stimulus plan that to ensure the state, that's saying that we support the HEROES, like the HEROES Act for this purpose. I, I appreciate the effort, Scott, that you put into this. But it's still a sticky point for me that this, we're putting our names on this to support the entire stimulus package. Federal stimulus package. That's, that's where I'm still stuck on this.
Well, I understand what you're saying on that and no, sorry, Jason, I understand what you're saying on that. I, I agree with what you're saying, but at the same time, and we did talk about supporting a financial package that would be aimed at education. But on your point, maybe we could amend this, Scott, to say the carbon school committee hereby supports a second and separate federal stimulus plan. Or, or something related to that effect. So we're not saying we're, we're supporting the HEROES Act. We're saying we're supporting a completely separate stimulus plan aimed at education.
I think that's kind of what it does.
Yeah, well, it's, I can understand Jason's point, it's just a
I mean, honestly, I would be, and this is so nitpicky, and I apologize, if we took out the word second. Because if we're saying it's a second federal stimulus package, we're aiming at the HEROES Act, right?
Because the HEROES Act was
We support a federal plan that ensures the, the state of Massachusetts, then we're not fully saying that it's this specific act that's already out there. But we're supporting something, you see, does that make sense?
Yeah, because the HEROES Act was the second plan. But I agree, I don't, I don't support the HEROES Act, but I, I would support a strictly funding mechanism.
So I bolded the word second and stimulus, in essence, saying take them out. I didn't want to just take them out.
I, I would, I would like to amend
Yep.
this by removing the word second.
Second.
Okay, do you want, do you have anything to put in its place?
No, I, I just want to get rid of the word second.
He's just saying support a federal stimulus plan. He's just talking about taking the second, the word second out. I have absolutely no problem with that. I'd second your motion and
Okay.
Yeah, because like I said, I feel like that would, that, by putting that word, that one word in there, we're literally saying, okay, that's the HEROES Act. But by getting rid of that, we're supporting a plan to get this, but not maybe particularly that exact plan. I know it's minutia, but at the same time, I want to make sure that, you know what I mean, like
Yeah, no.
Very specific about this with our names being on it, so.
No, it's a good point.
I agree, Jason, that's a really good change.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on the amendment? Okay, well, we'll vote on this now by roll call.
Is this the vote on the amendment or the whole thing?
Just the amendment, just the amendment.
Okay.
James?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. So that, the amendment was passed unanimously to take out the word second. Now, I have a, I'd like to make a, a motion for amendment myself, just to replace the word second. Now, I, I'm totally up for discussion on this. I feel that we should put down supports an independent federal, or yeah, I guess independent's the only word I can use right now, independent federal stimulus plan to ensure that the state of Massachusetts can fully fund public education. You know, that way, there's no confusion, it's not bundled with anything else.
It's not independent, though. It's a federal plan.
I was gonna say, isn't that, isn't that an oxymoron?
Well, no.
It's, it's not independent. It talks about, but it, this, the wording here basically says that you're looking for federal stimulus plan to ensure that we can fully fund public education.
Yeah, but that could also
To that topic, it's best, it doesn't encompass anything else. It only encompasses the language of what's there, which is fully funding education.
I don't agree with that, because he says it supports a federal stimulus plan. That could be the, the HEROES Act. That could be anything that they, they put out there.
So I, I, not that I can make it a proposed amendment, but I threw it in there.
What's that?
What's a federal stimulus plan supporting education to ensure the state of Massachusetts can fully fund public, public schools pre-K through
Sorry.
And the stimulus plan, the goal of the stimulus plan is for education. It's not a wide
Yeah, that's more, that's more targeted.
I'm fine with that.
All right, so, okay, so I'll make him an amendment to, to add to support education.
Can you make an motion, Andy?
No, I just made it.
I gotta withdraw my other one.
I just made it and Stephanie seconded it.
Perfect.
I withdraw my motion then.
James made the motion and Jen seconded it.
Stephanie seconded it.
I'm sorry, Stephanie seconded it.
All right, so will, will, any further discussion on to, on to, the add the words to support education? Seeing none. Roll call vote, James?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. All right. Okay, so now we'll have, we have, now do we have a motion and a second on the entire resolution with amendments?
We already have that, yeah.
Now, we have any further discussion on the resolution with amendments? All right, seeing none. Another roll call vote. James?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Stephanie?
Aye.
I'm also an aye. All right, so it's unanimous adoption. Thank you, Scott, for doing that, and thank you to our audience for being patient with us on this. This is, this is your policymaking in, in progress right here, you know, in real time. All right, so we go to reports from the school committee. Who would like to start? Does anybody have anything? No one? All right.
Okay, I always say something, so I'll say something. I agree with what James had mentioned earlier. The reopening committee for the fall is just gonna require so much work, hours and hours, and so much commitment from a large group of people. And I just want to say thank you to everyone that is on that committee and the subcommittees. To everyone who's taken the time to answer the surveys that have been sent out. You know, there's not gonna be one solution that's gonna work for everyone, but I honestly feel that if we all work together for what's in the best interest of our students and our staff and our community, that we'll be able to come up with some really solid options. We'd all love for COVID to disappear. Sadly, probably not gonna be the reality. But I just want to say thank you to everyone that's so committed to our district, and the fact that you have 28 parents, Scott, that wanted to participate is really excellent. I saw that the survey numbers went up since our reopening committee meeting the other day. Another 50 people have answered it so far, which is great. So I just wanted to say thank you to people, and please stay safe.
Thank you, Stephanie. James? Have any then?
Stay safe. Enjoy the summer.
Yes. Jason? Good. Okay, Jen, anything?
Um, no, I agree with everything Stephanie said. So are we going to discuss a possible another meeting date tonight, or?
I was going to throw that out before we left, just to say, I, I throw out June 30, July 30 as a date.
Well, should, should we wait till the, till the template's done? Or no?
It was, um, so yes, my, my, so our meeting right now is scheduled for the 13th, which is five weeks away. We'll definitely have it done by then. Yes, but we're going to have to have it done by then. But then the question would be, I think Andy's thought process was, maybe if we can, if we have a meeting while it's under construction...
We can add to it.
Thoughts on the construction process?
Well, yeah, review it.
Instead of getting it all at once.
It's a work in progress.
So should we meet before the 30th in case there needs to be things that go back to the committee?
Yeah, but that stuff isn't going to come out for two weeks.
Yeah, I think the 30th is a realistic date to have some, maybe have some meat in the plan.
I'm good with that.
Look at.
Okay. Michael, the 30th? Is everyone okay with that?
Everybody has a...
I potentially have a conflict because I'm planning on enrolling in the MASC, Charting the Course, which is happening the 27th, 28th, and 30th, but...
That's, that's, we meet at 7:00 PM though, right?
Yeah, and the Charting the Course is at 7:30.
Okay.
I can do the 29th for Wednesday.
5:30 and 7:30, they're double sessions, so.
We'll open that whole week, so we can do the 29th if, if that's better.
I'm fine with that, too.
Me too.
I could do the 29th.
Okay.
29th, and we'll make it a Zoom meeting?
Yeah, and, and my, my thought process would be, be one agenda rated.
Okay.
Yeah.
It's going to be almost like a special meeting. We're just going to look at...
The plan.
...the, where we are on the plan. If that, if the committee's okay with that.
That's fine by me. All right, so special meeting to look at the plan, July 29th at 7:00 PM via Zoom.
Yep.
Okay.
But on the 29th, what are next, if we need to meet again?
Okay. All right, so Jen, were you all done with your comments?
Yes.
Okay. I have a few things here, just to end up on. I would, of course, like to thank Rich and his team over at Area 58 for, for getting this up on TV for us. Thank you, guys. I would like to thank, not thank, I'd like to congratulate all of our 99 graduates that we're going to see you on August 1st for a live, open-air graduation over on the new field, the new turf field with a rain date of about the 2nd, right, Scott?
2nd, yeah. Thanks, guys.
So I'm very happy that we were able to have an in-person graduation for all the hard work our students have done and to be recognized. The drama performance, Scott, is that the Mamma Mia?
Yes, so we're going to do Mamma Mia on the 28th.
That's great, okay. July 28th at the Auditorium, Mass required.
At 7:00 o'clock. We were inspired by town meeting. We said, if we have a town meeting in the auditorium with 90, 100 people, I'll be able to get approval to do Mamma Mia.
That's great, awesome. All right, and I have one other thing for you. I got a letter forwarded to me. And I'm going to read it here for everybody. This is from your Carver Administration Leadership Team, Scott. You don't know about this.
Right, I do not know about this, huh?
Right, surprise. All right, so, sent to me as the chair, July 7th. I'm going to read it for you. Dear Chairman Cotterelli and Carver School Committee Members, the Administrative Leadership Team, composed of district and school administrators, would like to publicly acknowledge the leadership of Scott Neef through these ever-changing times. Since, since March, he has approached the complex challenges of leading our organization with calmness, confidence, and direction. He has openly solicited feedback and involvement from all stakeholder groups, oftentimes navigating the tensions that exist between differing perspectives and interests. He has been transparent with faculty, parents, and student groups about the challenges of pivoting to a remote learning environment and now in the planning of three models to reopen schools in the fall. Moving forward, he continues to advocate for the best interest of students and communicates this, excuse me, communicates this consistency and conviction. Mr. Neef will credit our team, faculty, staff, families, and students for working together to make these adjustments. While that is true, we recognize there is a huge responsibility that rests on Mr. Neef's shoulders, a responsibility that weighs heavily because of his dedication to serving the Carver community. As a leadership team, we would like to formally thank Mr. Neef and his family in appreciation, Ruby Maestis, Tanya Dawson, Paula Foley, Mike Schultz, Mike Martin, Christine Cabral, Brad Brothers, Karen Tygitt, and Meredith Erickson. So this is the letter here. I will forward a copy to each of you. And congratulations, Scott, that was very, very nice, and, and I agree 100%.
Hold on, Scott.
Well, thank, thank you very much to the Administrative Leadership Team for doing that. But as they said, I will defer, you know, there's a lot of people who are working really hard within the district to support our kids, and I'm always proud of what they do. But thank, thank you to them for their recognition.
That was very nice of them, and you know, they, they, they appreciate good leadership, Scott. That's what you do.
Thank you.
Okay, so I would entertain a...
Make a motion to end regular session and head to executive session to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position to the public body with a 10-minute break in between.
That's fine.
Five-minute break?
Let's, let's do 10 minutes. So we'll, we'll meet back at, why don't we say 9:10? A little more than, a little more than 10 minutes.
Roll, roll call vote on the motion?
Yes, roll call vote, okay.
I think we need a second soon.
Yeah.
Who seconded?
Yeah, we got a second, okay. Stephanie?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Jason?
Aye.
James?
Aye.
And I'm also an aye. Thank you, everybody, for tuning in with us tonight and joining us. Thank you, the Carver community. And we will see you next month.
Broad.
You all, see the rest of you at 9:10.
All right, thanks, everybody.